Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 7:02. It is time for the regularly scheduled Beloit City Council meeting here at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. It is Monday, October 15, 2012. Item number one is called Order and Roll Call.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Thank you. And number two, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, Special Order of the Day and Announcements. Item 3A is a proclamation declaring October 15, 2012, as White Kane Safety Day. Mr. Vice President.
An official proclamation of the city of Beloit. Whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 200,000 Wisconsin residents, and whereas the majority of these persons use a travel aid such as a White Kane or dog guide, and whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing loss of vision, and whereas people who operate motor vehicles must be alert for visually impaired pedestrians. Now therefore, the city council president of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim Monday, October 15, 2012, as White Kane Safety Day in Beloit, and urge operators of motor vehicles to be acutely aware of visually impaired pedestrians and obey the Wisconsin laws that protect them. Presented this 15th day of October, 2012, Charles M. Haynes, President.
Do you have anyone to receive that proclamation?
They were notified of the meeting tonight. I'm not sure anyone is here, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Item number four is Public Hearings. We have four tonight. Item number 4A.
2013 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Proposed Budget and Annual Action Plan. The Community Development Authority recommended approval, four to zero.
Ms. Christensen.
To maintain its eligibility for CDBG funding each year, the city is required to submit an annual action plan and a CDBG budget. The plan, which was included in your packet, I was looking for the front page, looks like this, and essentially is the annual plan. And it is really consistent with what the five-year plan is. There's not anything different in there. We're just moving the strategies forward from that. The CDA did interview all the applicants for the CDBG process, and they did make their recommendations, and I don't know how to bring up the part of my.
You got the pointer?
Yep.
Yeah. There you go. Right goes forward, left goes back.
The first column show, this is the public service, public service agencies, and the first column shows the amount funded in '12. The second column shows the amount requested for '13, and the third column shows the CDA Some of them, they're about what has been typical over the years. However, Family Services for one kind of adjusted how they wanted projects to be funded. And so you see, there's a little bit of a shift with more money going towards the homeless programs this year than in past years. And then this is the remainder of the public service agencies. And then the next slide will show you Planning and Program Administration, which we are recommending money for the Fair Housing Program this year. We are going to try to get into a mode of allocating money each year instead of allocating a lot of money one year and then using it for two years. The CDA did recommend that a big, a portion of it be allocated for education to try to do the fair housing education plus the enforcement with Councilman Levy leading that charge. And then it includes $110,009 for a code enforcement program from the new grant dollars. And then continuing on with the grant dollars, there's $130,000 recommended for the housing rehab program. And at this time, we're not recommending anything for the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund. There is about $56,000 balance in that fund right now, and we're estimating about $65,000 will come in next year, making that hotel loan actually, that there's more income coming in than there was in the past. And then this is the actual program income that we're seeing come in. These four programs generate income. And as you can see, the Economic Development Loan Fund generates about $63,000, or will in '13. The code enforcement program has about $74,100 that is down from last year due to the fact that we allocated some of that revenue to the general fund to cover general fund expenses related to the code enforcement program. The housing rehab loan program is expected to bring in $50,000, and then NHS is expected to bring in $8,000 for total Community Development Block Grant budget of $680,100. And tonight is the night scheduled for your public hearing. You are not taking action on this budget tonight. It will come up before you at your next meeting on the 5th of November. So it's been, a notice did get sent out to get published in the paper. A copy of that notice is included in your packet. So essentially, what you're doing tonight is just hearing from the public on the Community Development Block Grant budget and the annual action plan.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing for item 4A. If anyone wished to come forward and speak on the Community Development Block Grant Proposed Budget and Annual Action Plan. Please approach the podium, give your name and address.
Good evening. Mark Perry, Director of Planning and Development for Community Action, Beloit. Just wanted to reiterate the importance of the funding that we receive each year through the Community Development Block Grant, not just for community action but for all the organizations that you fund. As we work to move people towards economic self-reliance, that partnership between our private or our nonprofit organizations and the city of Beloit is really beneficial to the people in this community. And I hope that you will continue to fund us and our partner organizations that are listed there as you consider that for your next meeting. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on item 4A. I don't believe that we have any action to take on this today. So I think we'll move forward to item 4B. Well, you know, we probably should.
Tony, would you tell she?
I waved to her.
4B is the 2013 Home Investment Partnerships Proposed Budget. The Community Development Authority recommended approval, four to zero.
Ms. Christensen.
We have a Rock County Home Consortium, and we have an agreement that was approved in 2001. As a result of that agreement, 15% off the top, the money that comes into Rock County goes to a community housing development organization in Beloit. 19% of the funds go to the city of Beloit for programs we feel are important. For 2013, the recommendation is toward $76,935, which is the city's portion to the city's housing rehab program for both homeowner and rental rehab loans, and toward the $60,738 just to a community housing development organization in Beloit early in 2013. At this point, what the staffs thought, we've met with Janesville and discussed this, who is our other partner city as part of this. And given the uncertainty we've had with the Community Housing Development Organization, which isn't a later item on your agenda, at this point, they just wanted us to allocate it for a specific type of project, which at this point we're recommending acquisition rehab. And that later in '13, we'll bring this back through the public process when we see how the changes we're making with the CHODO funds have played out. And so those are the amounts that the CD has recommended. And tonight is, as with the last one, just the night for your public hearing to receive public comment. It will be on your agenda for November 5 for action, and this has been noticed as a public hearing in the Beloit Daily News.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4B, the 13 Home Investment Partnership Proposed Budget. Do you have anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4B? Second call for anyone to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for anyone to come forward and speak on item 4B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. Since there is no action to be taken tonight, we'll move on to item 4C.
The 2013 Operating Library and Capital Improvements Proposed Budgets.
Mr. York.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the public hearing for the city's operating and capital budgets for 2013, next year. We did make a fairly extensive presentation to the council at the last meeting two weeks ago, and this is going to be somewhat abbreviated from the presentation that we made at that time. The total budget proposed for next year now stands at approximately $91 million. It's an actual decrease from the 2012 budget of $965,660, a little bit less, or 1.05%. The general fund portion of the budget proposed for next year is $30.6 million. That is an increase over the current year budget of almost $900,000, or a little bit over 3%. And the next major category of operating funds are the city's enterprise operations. These fund primarily the city's water, wastewater, stormwater utility systems, our transit systems included in this group of accounts. Also includes our city's golf course and our cemetery, and our ambulance service that's provided by the fire department is included. And these funds total a little bit over $18 million, an increase of $333,927, or just under 2% over the 2012 budget. This next slide gives you a pretty good summary of all the various fund categories and the operating and capital budgets for next year. And as you can see, this shows you where the actual decrease originates, the biggest being the capital improvement budget for next year. It is approximately $2 million less than the current year's capital spending plan, almost $9 million versus a little bit under $11 million for 2012. I would like to point out, the general fund again is increasing a little bit over 3%, $898,000. Our debt service budget for next year is actually decreasing as a result of the repayment of some of the principal amount of the debt, as well as, as you recall, the last couple of years, we've had a number of refunding opportunities in our debt service fund where we've actually issued new debt at a lower interest rate, which has saved the city's a significant amount of money in the future as far as the interest cost on those outstanding bonds. Special revenue funds, this is primarily the city's tax increment districts are made up special revenue funds. Also includes our public library fund is included in this group, as well as the solid waste and recycling fund budget for next year. And that's proposed to increase slightly, almost $350,000 for next year, a little bit over 2.4%. And again, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, the enterprise operations at a little bit over $18 million. The internal service funds, these are funds the city has set up essentially to pay for services that are received by the various operating departments in the city. And the predominant fund in this category is the city's self-insured health and dental plan that we have for both active as well as retired employees. Makes up the majority of the internal service funds. It also includes our fleet operations out of Public Works. We charge the user departments for the vehicles that are maintained by the fleet department, and that's also accounted for here. This gives you just a graphic display of the general fund revenues, and as we've noted in the past, the majority, as you will notice, of our general fund revenue sources come from state and federal aids that we receive, primarily money from the state of Wisconsin. Makes up about 2/3 of the revenue that we receive in the general fund. The other largest source of revenue that we receive are taxes, primarily in the form of property taxes that we assess against the property owners in the city. That makes up about 26% of the general fund revenue sources. And we also charge various fees for services that different departments provide, particularly in our Parks and Recreation Department. For example, we have user fees that we assess for the users of those specific services. As far as expenditures, again, this gives you a graphic display of the general fund expenditures projected for next year. And the police and fire departments, you know, comprise almost 2/3 of our general fund spending in those two departments. Public Works is the next largest source of spending in the general fund at 20%. And again, the total expenditures, a little bit over $30.5 million proposed for next This is the proposed tax levy. It's actually the 2012 levy that will be collected in 2013. This will be assessed against properties based on the 2012 assessment of those properties. I just would like to point out, we have this footnoted that the assessed values that are on this particular slide are estimates at this point. We have not received final assessed value numbers from the Department of Revenue. We most likely will not get those until the 1st or mid-November is usually when those numbers come out. The tax bills generally don't go out until about the first week or two of December is usually when those are mailed. So we're still waiting on some final numbers from the state in order to see what the actual final tax rate will be. This $10.31 is actually a projected number at this point. But the tax levy amount should remain the same, $13,656,275 proposed for 2013. That's an increase of $182,000, approximately a little bit over 1.3%. And the tax rate proposed is actually a slight decrease from the current tax rate of $10.33. It's about a 2 cent per thousand reduction in the current tax rate, at least at this point. But again, that number is subject to change. This graph just gives you some history on what the tax rates have been the last few years compared to what we're proposing for next year. As you can see, there has been a fairly steady rise in tax rates the last four years. This is largely as a result of, and you'll see it on this next slide, decreasing property values because the tax rate itself is just a product of the tax levy and the assessed value of the property that's assessed for the taxes. As you can see from this next slide here, there has also been a fairly steady decline in property values the last few years in the city. As far as the next steps in the budget process, of course, tonight's the public hearing gives the public an opportunity to comment on the budget that's been proposed. I think there is a future workshop we're looking at to consider some fees proposed by the fire department for services that they provide. And at this point, we're planning to schedule this for the next council meeting, November 5, for council's consideration for adoption of the budget for 2013. And with that, I'd ask, any questions or comments that the council has, or allow the public to?
Okay, yeah, we'll have our public hearing first, and we appreciate that. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4C, the 2013 Operating Library and Capital Improvements Proposed Budgets. Do you have anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item 4C? Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Mark Price, 1266 McKinley. Mike Ramsden, a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, not able to be here tonight and wrote a letter. I believe you all have copies of that. I would read the letter, but I, you know, if you've read it, and he's made some good points about the need for Parks Patrols of some kind. I would rather than read his letter, make some observations of my own. Last meeting of the Parks Commission last week, we had a member, the executive director of the Friends of Riverfront, come and bring her annual report. Included in that annual report was some concern she has over feelings of safety and at the Riverfront. And before it gets too far down the road, we think, you know, Parks Patrol is something that could help alleviate that. And maybe not the Parks Patrol we had in the past, but a more professional type of Parks Patrol. And I think we need to get this done sooner rather than later, and I think it needs to be a priority. And your job is to set priorities in policy. And I think that this isn't a funding problem, as always been the excuse. I think it's a priority problem. So we should, you know, before it gets too far down the road and we ruin some of the jewels on the rock and all the things that we've done and accomplished in the last 20-plus years, that you make it a point, finding a way to fund a Parks Patrol in this budget. Again, maybe not like the previous Parks Patrol, but something a little improved. I think we've got funds for community service officers, and we've got funds to cover lots of things. And if we can find, if we can establish the priority in the funds, we'll find the funds to do it, and we'll do it right. And if it can't be done this year, to put it on the agenda for next year. It's too late in the process. But I entertain any questions you might have. I think a lot of you are already familiar with, you know, how fine parks are, how fine Riverfront, big hills, and understand the nature of the problem. I don't think I have to go over that with you. I think that Mike's done a really nice job here of explaining why, you know, what the options are and why they're important. But anyway, I couldn't respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have any other citizens wishing to come forward and speak on item 4C? Third and final call for citizens to come forward and speak on item 4C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4C and open it to councillor comments and questions. Start with councillor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, and I know I've been advocating for this each year, that I've been on the council that we have, once we eliminated the Parks Patrol position, I too feel it is important that we find a creative way to fund a part-time Parks Patrol individual. We're hearing as a commission of a member, the liaison, city council liaison on that commission, we're hearing as a commission more anecdotal concerns from residents about, at the very least, a perception of safety in the parks. And we're also seeing more concrete evidence of some increased concerns with safety at parks. And I do think this needs to be taken seriously. The problem is if we continue to have problems or issues, then people won't be using the parks that we spent so much time and money investing in because they don't feel safe there. Whether that's more perception than reality doesn't matter. If they stay away because there's a perception that they're not safe, I think that's a significant problem. And then we have these beautiful jewels, as Mark shared, that aren't being used or that develop the reputation for not being the kind of places that our residents feel comfortable going to. So I would hope this body would consider, I think Mike came up with some really creative ideas for how to think out of the box in funding a part-time position and maybe consolidating some other things that we are funding through that position. And then also, I would just like to say, I shared this at our workshop, but I wanted to make sure publicly I made the statement it was on the record, so that it's no surprise. My biggest passion for this budget is that we get to 15 minimum manning for our firefighter and EMT staffing configurations. I made it very clear last year that that was my absolute top priority. I was willing to concede and allow some of the strategies that we wanted to pursue to see if we could get there through negotiations or through grant proposals. It's been a year now that has not come to pass, and I still feel very, very strongly that we need 15 minimum manning staffing for the safety of our residents. I cannot in good conscience vote for a budget that does not include that staffing configuration. Thank you.
Okay, since I don't have the lights, who is next?
Mr. President, I would ask, since we have a request for the Parks Patrol person, I would ask if we could direct the city manager and maybe the chief to pull a report to see what kind of calls we've had in our parks within the last year, I would say, to see if, in fact, the current concerns that's out there are warranted or this, you know, just to make sure. Because the last thing that I think we all would want to do is add a position if, in fact, we truly don't need one. So I think I would feel comfortable if we had a report that we can see how many calls it was to the park or something. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Councillor Spencer.
Following on councillor Levy's question, I would ask if staff could prepare some information on where this might fit into the budget if we were to do that, what your recommendations might be on alternatives, and also whether there's any way to wrap this into the CSO positions that we're adding relative to animal control, whether there might be any way to do something there. So if we do find out from the safety report that it's warranted, I'd be interested to have a recommendation on how we might do it.
Councillor Lukey.
I just wanted to follow up to councillor person, DeForest Davis's comments. I think it's important for the public to know that all the councilors held that as a priority, the 15 man or woman limit. We looked for every possible way, and we all have looked for ways. So I think it's not one councillor, it's all seven want that as a top priority. It's a matter of what else is cut to achieve that. We were hoping the grant would bring it through for two and a half years, but we're looking, whether it's concessions from within the department or whatever, we all want that as a top priority. Thank you.
May I have the councillor comments or questions?
I think that's also quite relevant, is that we went down this road, a tough road last year about this. And we knew what we were looking at when we had to go ahead and pass the budget with those cuts and reduce the manning, and the reasons why we did it are still relevant. As undesirable as it was, it was the only way to move forward, I believe. I think those are the reasons that we did that are still relevant. So that's the end of my comments on that. Hearing no other comments by other councilors, I think we'll move forward to the public hearing. hearing of number 4D.
A resolution approving an amendment to the 2011 and 2012 home budget related to the Community Housing Development Organization funding.
As I explained with the home budget, 15% of our consortium dollars each year off the top go to a community housing development organization in Beloit. In November of last year, you awarded that to Neighborhood Housing Services of Beloit. And then early this year, we got a letter from HUD concerned about the fact that those dollars weren't getting spent in a timely manner. Since you guys don't deal day-to-day with home, how home works is that you have two years from your grant award to commit those funds, and then you have a total of five years to spend. And so they were looking at the commitment numbers and specifically for the choo-doo part, because you have to have your total amount of the consortium, 15% has to be in choo-doo dollars. And as a result of that, earlier this year, the city council agreed to split the $2,012 between NHS and Community Action. Despite that modification, NHS is still struggling to spend the funds. The difficulty for us as a consortium is that to be a community housing development organization isn't a simple thing. And right now, in Rock County, essentially, we have Community Action NHS, and I think really that's it in terms of who's doing development activity. These dollars are required to be spent on development activity, whether it's, which means that they have to own the property and be developing it, whether it's rehab or whatever it is. So we met, Janesville and Beloit met with Community Action, we met with NHS, and the solution we came up with that the CDA did recommend was taking the 11 funds, which had been awarded to NHS, and awarding them to Community Action, and then taking the 12 funds and awarding them to NHS, which would give NHS to get some projects completed, to give them kind of a reprieve. And at the same time, it would give Community Action some funds to do another house in the Merrill neighborhood that's been sitting there. The way the home funds work, they actually have to dedicate it to an address, which I wish I had off the top of my head, but I don't. But I can provide that for you later if you would like it. The 11 funds are $83,594. The 12 funds are $60,738. Even though it is a reduction in funds for NHS, they have indicated support for it. And with that, basically, CDA did recommend doing this budget amendment. And I know when we approved it last time, Jim had said, if this doesn't work, you know, what do we do? And this was our next step in terms of what do we do. And I know that Janesville is working at other creative solutions, and we've been having, continuing to have dialogue with both NHS and Community Action through this process, so that we can retain these dollars in Rock County. So with that, tonight is the night scheduled for your public hearing, and this is also on your item for, on your agenda for action tonight.
I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4D, the resolution approving the amendment to the 2011 and 2012 home budgets. Anyone wish to come forward and speak on item 4D? Second call for anyone to come forward and speak on item 4D. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4D and entertain our motion. Levy for approval and second by Lukey. Okay. Counselor Levy.
Julie, I have a quick, not so much a question, but a statement, and I'm excited about the fact that you said maybe this could get us another home in the Merrill neighborhood. I want to make sure that we stress to Community Action that I will, once again, be following up very closely to make sure that the homes are not sitting once we start them, that we have a process in place from start to finish, that we don't have homes sitting, half-done, or still working for years at a time. Because hearing from the residents in that neighborhood, they're very pleased with the development, so they're very excited that people are investing in the neighborhood. But they're also taken aback by, okay, they started, but they stop it. And the house probably looked a little bit better when they didn't start halfway. So I just want to make sure that that message is clear, and I know Mark is sitting up there, so I'm sure he'll take it back. But I just want to make sure that we appreciate what they're doing in the Merrill neighborhood. So I don't want to diminish that at all, but I just want to make sure that we have a process that we can continue to move forward once we start this project.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions before I leave?
Counselor DeForest.
Well, I guess if I could also express to help alleviate your concerns to my fellow councilman, when I was on the Board of Directors at Community Action, we did, and I did, take your concern very stridently to the board. And they understand now, I think in a way that maybe they didn't realize before, that those exteriors for sure have to be done early on in that rehab project. So they got that message loud and clear, just to let you know.
Thank you.
And what we've done differently with how we funded Community Action is, instead of, you know, going in and awarding them this money and saying, you have to do two houses, we're going in and saying, you can do one house with this, because this is a house that they haven't been actively working on. So this will be a house that we will get complete. They're not buying a new house.
Okay.
This is a house they currently have in their inventory that we will then get completed. And then, I guess, the hard part is the selling of these houses in our neighborhood.
And so, Mark, when you go back, make sure they fully understand. We're very happy that they're doing, investing. We're very happy with that. I know sometime the message could get twisted that the council is upset, but no, we're not. We're very excited about this opportunity, but we just, so.
Do we have any other councilor comments or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Number five is citizens' participation. We've reached a point in the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may be coming before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer to the speaker to staff or assistants. May I ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind? We have one sign-up sheet to speak under citizens' participation. Jeff Livingston, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Jeff Livingston, attorney for Harry Samra. My address, 542 East Grant. That's my office, my house is 835 Park Avenue. And we're here to talk about, on the consent agenda, 6C and B. And I know these matters are on the consent agenda. I just want to let you know we're available to answer questions or would like to give some input on those issues. And I don't know if you want us to do that now, or if you want us to wait, if those things are going to come off the consent agenda.
Generally, if we do pull them off the consent agenda, we could, and we have questions, that would be the appropriate time for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Hearing none, we'll move to item 6, which is consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or so requests, and in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda.
Mr. Fresno, I would ask to remove 6D and 6E.
Okay, we have removed 6D and 6E. Any...
I would like to also request removal of item 6C, please.
Okay, so we remove C, D, and E. That would leave us with items 6A, F, and G. Anyone else wish anything else removed? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Lukey, second by Levy. The items are 6A, F, and G. All in favor?
Also B.
Oh, B, excuse me, B as well. So 6A, B, F, and G. All in favor approving the consent agenda as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes 7-0. Item 6C.
6C is a resolution approving a Class A beer license for SNS Express Mart, Inc., DBA SNS Express Mart, Inc., Harry Samra, agent, located at 1407 Liberty Avenue. The ABLCC recommended approval, 7 to 0.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second by Levy, second by Spritzer. And...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
I did have some concerns. We've had problems at this particular location, this property, in the past. And so, if I may, Mr. President, I'd like to ask some questions of Mr. Samra as the new owner of this property.
Okay, sure, certainly.
Sergeant, this is Samra, 1985 Pebble Drive, Beloit, Wisconsin.
Thank you. I did note in the information provided from the committee that you're intending on making some improvements to the location. Could you talk about some of those, please?
Well, it's going to be a mobile gas station. Changing inside, it's going to be remodeled inside, cooler's going to be done, new register, new countertops, new flooring, and pumps out there, used ones, new mobile sign out there, and LED lights for the canopy.
Are you familiar with some of the issues this property's had before, and how are you prepared to deal with avoiding those?
Yeah. I heard a lot of problems, they had a lot of problems. But I run, I got six other stations that I run, I run pretty clean stations. So basically, I have a managers at the site, and I am myself and my brother. We run to the stations, you know, make sure everything is running fine, make sure there's no problems.
Are there any other specific measures that you would take to help? Because this site is unusual in its history. I mean, it has a long history of problems, which I know you haven't necessarily encountered in some of your other, the sites of your other businesses.
Well, the other business I got in Beloit, 1902 Chopier Road, one on Town of Beloit, 2405 Riverside Drive, and I got one in Lake Mills, one in Rockford. And we run pretty clean businesses.
If I could add something to that. At the station he has on Chopier, he was asked by the police department, they're having some loitering problems on certain evenings, and working with the police department, he closed down from, I can't remember the...
From 2 to 3 Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
To alleviate that problem. And I think the intent is to continue work with the police department with any issues that come up.
Great, thank you. I needed to hear that. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vanderburg.
Mr. Samra, at any of your other locations, either in the city of Beloit, the Town of Beloit, or any of your other spots, have you received any citations for underage persons purchasing alcohol at your locations?
I did, like, five years ago at Beloit, Beloit Mobile, 1902 Chopier Road.
And following that, what actions, if any, did you take to make sure the problem didn't occur again?
I make sure, I updated the software on the computer so we can punch in the IDs. And I trained my cashier, I trained myself a little bit better to how to check the IDs. And I trained my cashier and my managers, like, once a week, make sure they're not selling to underage.
The reason I ask, obviously, I share concerns, as does Counselor DeForest, this location has been a problem area, and it's gone without a liquor or a beer license for a year or perhaps more. And it's a bit of a swallow to reintroduce the issue into the neighborhood without at least some level of confidence that you're not going to be another operator who has problems.
Do you want to add to that? Promise that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Spritzer.
I'm inclined to give you the chance on this one, based on your record, but I want to make clear, suspect I speak for others up here, that if there are any problems, you know, we've certainly not been lenient on this location or in general in the past, and I expect we wouldn't be in the future. So certainly hope that there aren't, and wish you the best of luck with that.
And I think I would like to just add in here also, I guess I was kind of encouraged when I was at the last meeting, and you know, I'm one of the ones that can kind of be really tough. And even thinking at the meeting, I was, I mean, I was asked a few questions, because as we say, we represent the entire city, so we want to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city. I guess I'm encouraged here that we have a new owner going into this establishment to take over a problem spot. And if you have an individual that's looking to, already knows a problem spot, and still willing to step out there and say, let me give it a try, kudos to you as well. But knowing the place on Chopier Road where you have and seeing the changes that's been done there, as far as crowd controls, I think that kind of helps encourage me to see and then to know that you're working with the police, and we ask you to keep that up. But I want to make sure that as we move forward down the road in the future, we're going to have these things come up where we're going to revoke licenses from business owners. And then we're going to have new business owners that want to go in there and give it a try. I just want to make sure that we're being careful and not punish the new owner for the old person's sins. So I want to just make sure we're mindful of that, because I think, and his track record speaks for himself. But I also don't want him to go in there nervous and saying, the first time I make a mistake, they're going to haul me back down there and pull me out. Now granted, if it's a serious mistake, that probably will, but I don't want a new owner to go into an establishment nervous just to do anything wrong, and he's going to be fearful to come back down here. So I don't want him to think that we're going to be riding by every five minutes, like, watching him. So I don't want to give him that impression, okay? So I wanted to make sure that we give him a fair shot as well, too, so.
Okay.
Coming from a person that's usually on the other side of the fence, so.
I want him to be, I want him to have him over his shoulder, doing it right all the time.
Come in every five minutes and buy something.
Okay, anything else?
Sorry, I disagree with my colleague. I want you to be nervous. This is a serious location with serious history, and I know you're a new person and a new owner, and you have a good track record. I want you to take seriously the history, there's problems that come with that history. There are individuals who have a certain impression of this location that unfortunately you're going to have to work hard to overcome. And I want you to take those very seriously and make formal conscious efforts to address those, so that when they arise, that you can nip them in the bud. So I guess I disagree. I want you to think very consciously about what's at stake here at this location. So I appreciate your willingness to venture there. But I take very seriously the charge that when we issue liquor licenses, they come with the responsibility to protect our residents and to sell liquor responsibly. So, thank you.
Counselor Levy.
I totally get it. But I want to make sure that we have committees, we have policies in place, that they're enforceable. So I want to make sure that we understand that, first of all, and I'm sure that we all do. But I also want to make sure that there's fair treatment for everybody, that if we're going to expect this gentleman to be nervous because he's taking over a troubled spot, that we need to make sure that, you know, we're sending that message out to everybody and saying, we're nervous about everybody. And that's what's not, I'm not hearing when other ones are coming forward to get this. I want to make sure that we have a new owner that's going in there. I think we have to allow him, with his track record, to go in there, and he knows, he's admitted that this is a troubled spot. He knows that. So I'm sure he's sat down and he thought about, before he made that decision to go in here, okay, I know it's going to have to change. So I, stepping out there, and I believe that if you have a person that wants to do this and move forward, that's all I have to say.
I have to, at this point, I have to stick, say my statement about this. I generally go into these with a philosophy, and that philosophy is that most upstanding citizens will get one crack at an alcohol license. Very few will get a second, and no one gets a third from me. So I think this is your, you've shown you've been, you know, able to handle this sort of thing in other locations, and I'm certainly willing to move forward and give you a crack at this. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of granting this license, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so item 6C passes 7-0. Next is item 6D.
A resolution approving a Class A liquor license, a requested addition to an existing Class A beer license for Samra and Singh, Inc., DBA Beloit Mobile, Harry Samra, agent, located at 1902 Chopier Road. The ABLCC recommended approval, 4 to 3.
Do we have any, would one move approval?
Approval.
Lukey?
Lupki, and second?
Second.
Second by Levy.
Counselor Vander Bogart.
I think this is something that we should not approve. I think there is a major difference between a beer distributor license and a Class A liquor license distributor. I think that in a time when the issue of drunk driving continues to be one that plagues our community and our state and our country, to allow for another, yet another, location for easy access to hard liquor is a bad policy to pursue. I'm willing to do it with beer. I understand you can get just as intoxicated with beer as you can with liquor. But this is a substantive step up that I'm not willing to take. There are plenty of places in town and out of town and everywhere else to buy liquor if that's your, that's your choice to do so. We don't have to make it easier for everybody. If his business plan is so fragile that he's going to fold because he doesn't have the ability to sell Jim Beam at all hours of the day or night, that's, that's too bad. Enough is enough. And these comments would apply to six E also. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd like to second my colleague's comments. I, too, am against expanding into this, extending liquor license sales at convenience stores for hard liquor. I do not want to go down that road. I'm already personally very uncomfortable with selling beer at convenience stores, and I certainly am not willing to venture into Class A liquor licenses for convenience stores. Thank you.
Counselor Spritzer.
I have a question for the city clerk, or anyone else who could answer this. I noticed in comments I got from Judy, who staffed the committee, that there was a question about selling single-shot bottles of liquor and a comment that they wouldn't be sold. Do we know, is that enforceable at all, or is that just, just a word that, you know, wouldn't necessarily last if business practices changed at some point?
There's nothing, there's not part of a license that can require people can't sell single shots, but they can sell larger parts of that. I mean, if you wanted to make the resolution, make the license contingent on that, I'm not sure if that's something you could do. I don't know if our city attorney can answer that question, or maybe we'd need to do a little bit more research on that for you.
If I could add anything on that. I talked to the assistant city attorney about that very issue. And while she said that would be possible, she said that the city normally doesn't do that because the enforcement would be very difficult. But I do think that when someone comes to the council, as he did, my client did, to the commission, and says that he will not do that, certainly that's something that would, if he changed that, that would come up, obviously, at renewal time. In addition, and so he has said he does not intend to sell those types of bottles. And also, my client has indicated that all hard alcohol sales would be from behind bulletproof glass that they have currently at that location. So the public doesn't have the access to come in and touch the bottle until they pay for it, and then it goes through that bulletproof glass. So while this is a convenience store, it does have protections that some of the other stores don't have, like the Walgreens across the street, and then presumably the Piggly Wiggly that's going in next door also.
And I had a follow-up question for the city clerk. If, do you know if there are other convenience stores that have this type of license, and if so, how many?
I can't answer that off the top of my head. I would be happy to provide you with that information tomorrow morning.
Any other counsel questions or comments?
I would think so.
And Counselor Levy.
I share the concerns of fellow counselors who've expressed the opinion of the liquor as opposed to the beer. But I'm also concerned about consistency and fairness. You know, and it's tough. It's difficult. It's, it's easy to obtain alcohol in Beloit, in most cities. But we have to be very careful in judging who gets the right to do it and who doesn't, and how much politics plays into it. So I have a concern that we be fair in all of our dealings also.
Counselor Vander Bogart.
I don't know that politics plays anything in it. I haven't been approached by anybody one way or the other. But common sense says enough is enough. And just already in my mind on the strip, you can go to Badger Liquor, you can go to Happy House, you can go to Walgreens, you can go perhaps to Mr. Samra's location. Maybe he'll be back in a year asking for liquor on the West Side at 1407 Liberty. There needs to be somewhere an end to this. And I don't know where that line is either. It needs to be fair. But do we simply say we have no limits at all? I know we've discussed this at different points on the council, and we don't want to get into a situation where we are rationing them out necessarily. But goodness sakes, this is a drive-through, gas station, convenience store setup, and you know that people who buy the stuff are going to hop in their car and they're going to start drinking. I mean, it's, I know that anyway.
Counselor Levy.
Two things. Not, Counselor Vander Bogart, not necessarily. Everyone who buys something, they don't get in their car and they don't drink. And I really, this is really strange for me, the one that's being on the other side. But, but to Counselor Lupki's point, it is a tough line to draw because we can sit here and say enough's enough. We don't want him, we don't want it sold here. So then, if I want liquor, go to his establishment, he's not selling it, I go to Walgreens, get it, do the same thing that you're saying, and as his attorney has said, that we have a new grocery store going in there. We don't know for sure if they're going to sell it. And that's kind of what I said at the meeting. I think it's a 99% chance to say that they probably will. So then are we going to sit here when they come forward and say, you know, we want to sell liquor, and we're a big-name grocery store, and is that going to be okay? Or are we still going to take this line of enough's enough? And that's where I think Counselor Lupki is saying, there's got to be some fairness here. And I am really struggling with this because I am usually the one that's saying absolutely not. But when, when we look at this and we talk about fairness, and we know that is coming, we had Centries over there, and they sold it. And just a few years ago, we did approve Walgreens to do it. And I don't know, where did we draw the line? I agree, it needs to stop someplace. I agree. Well, where does this need to stop? I don't have that answer. But I don't want us to appear to be unfair either. I don't know. That's just my comments, and it just looks as though that if Piggly Wiggly comes in here and they decide to sell it, do you know we're going to be sitting here in the same spot? And are we going to send the same message? Are we going to say, just because you're a big-name grocery store, we're going to go ahead and give you a liquor license? We don't know. Maybe his portfolio, maybe he can go without selling the liquor and won't put him out of business. He's been doing it this long without it, so I'm sure it won't put him out of business. But then again, we don't know. It may. So I think we really need to take a hard look at this. And not only this decision, but just look at this whole issue and say, okay, what are the parameters, when we're going to, when we're going to award him and when we're not going to award him?
Well, I think that, I know where I draw the line. And I draw the line of somebody who's came into a facility, get gas, and to go, and to continue on with their journey, and they pick up hard liquor, which they can intoxicate themselves within, within, you know, the space of the time it takes them to drive to wherever they're going, I have a problem with that.
But I can do that, I can do that for Walgreens.
Well, you can, but you're, you didn't, you're going to Walgreens usually to do other things. And a grocery store to do other things, where you're going to a convenience store, you're continuing a journey, a trip.
I totally disagree with that. And the reason being is because of the location where Walgreens is. I totally disagree with that. And I'm not just bashing Walgreens. But if I want liquor, I, if I want it, then I'm going to go to Walgreens and get it. And if I'm on my way to Madison, I'm still going to do the exact same thing that if I go to his establishment and pull off that way, too. So I don't see that. I don't see that logic in that. And you're going to have another one. I can guarantee you right now, in a couple of weeks, you're going to have another one of these that come back that we sit back for more research. So these are going to come. But we need to figure out what we're going to do, how are we going to mandate it, and how are we going to control it. But we can't use a logic that just because I'm in my car and I'm getting gas, because everybody that goes to his establishment does not get gas. So you can't use that logic. Just because I go there and buy liquor, I'm going to be on the road drinking. I live three blocks from there or more. If I go there and get liquor, I can go home, if that's what I want. So I'm just saying. So we can't just assume that just because we're buying liquor at this establishment, that we're just going to go around drinking in the streets.
All right. Counselor Spritzer.
Well, I'm terribly torn on this, too. And it sounds like there might be three votes against, and I don't know whether I want to be number four. But I'm very curious on the question of, of just what we've done on this in other cases in terms of hard liquor at convenience stores. Is there anybody who has a memory on that, if there are any others of this instance, or if this is sort of opening a new door? And if not, is there anything that would prevent us from laying this over until the next meeting to get an answer on that question?
Woodman's has the same type of setup. They've got, they've got liquor here inside the store, and they carry the same.
Please, mister, sir, you don't have the floor. Okay.
In talking about the fairness, it'd be easy for me to rationalize and say no. But we have to say no also to Piggly Wiggly, Walgreens, and others. Because you go into a gas station primarily for gas. But like Kevin said, you went for other reasons. Badger Liquor and the other liquor stores, all you buy in there is alcohol or, alcohol or beer or whatever. That's their business. Whereas you can just buy gas at a gas station or groceries. So we have to stick with that rationale. We'd have to say no to all the grocery stores, including Woodman's and other places. We need to be consistent. We've said yes to Woodman's, we'll probably say yes to Piggly Wiggly. And Walgreens we said yes to, and there are other places. So now we want to say no to somebody because it's gas?
Yeah.
We've got, we've got to reflect on fairness.
Because the nexus to the automobile is closer there than anyplace else. That's the point of difference.
All right. Let's go ahead and do this one at a time. We've been letting this flow too freely. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. For me, there is a distinction. And I can make a rationale that selling hard liquor at a convenience store, in my mind, is very different. And I don't have any problem being against that. Honestly, I don't want to see any alcohol served at any convenience store, but we already do that. There's other communities that don't. Janesville does not allow beer sales at convenience stores. I am against hard liquor sales at a convenience store. To me, there is a distinction between walking into Woodman's or Piggly Wiggly and running into convenience store. So I don't have any problem with making that distinction or feeling against a vote of my conscience to vote for Piggly Wiggly and vote against these particular measures. So. And I'd also like to remind my colleagues that I voted against the Walgreens sale of alcohol because I thought there was too much saturation there as well. I mean, the whole issue of fairness is on one hand, but we also have responsibility protecting the public. We can't say fairness rules out completely overprotection of the public. We have to weigh and balance both. And I'm concerned that we're weighing so heavily on fairness that we're not considering the concerns of the public. That's why these decisions come to this public body, so we can make sure that there's some concerns, there's weightiness about the public welfare. Thank you.
Counselor Kincaid.
I think enough is enough at that bright line at the service station. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And I didn't know that you couldn't get it at Janesville, but it seems to me that's one thing I would agree with them on, if that's the way they operate. But I do believe that there are plenty of places to get it. And I think the service station is one that I find offensive.
Do you have any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. Kevin, you may have the last word.
All right. Not always. Correct me if I'm wrong. Was there, wasn't there an impact study done in the immediate neighborhood, or was that for the other one that you wanted? Other residents in the neighborhood that you asked if this was, if they were opposed to this. And I believe that the majority of the neighbors in this neighborhood did not have a problem with it. There was a couple because it was near the churches, and we understand that. But I think the people in the neighborhood did not have a problem with it. And trust me, this is not an easy decision for me. But when we talk about, no, I'm, no. I'm done. I'm done.
We did, to answer the question, we did do a survey of the neighborhood, just informal one. And all neighbors we talked to agreed with the sales, except for the person at Walgreens because that was competition.
All right, then. Is there a motion second? I think we've about beaten this horse to death. So all in favor, say aye. Okay. You did, you used, I will, I will, we will recall the question. All in favor, say aye. Okay, that was Counselors Levy and, and, Counselors Levy and Lupki. All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
And that would be the balance of us. The item fails five to two. Two to five. Item six E.
A resolution approving a Class A liquor license, a requested addition to an existing Class A beer license for Rollat Oil Co. Incorporated, located at 1451 Madison Road, Paul R. Simon, agent. The ABLCC recommended approval four to three.
My name is Paul Simon, 9/11 Suffolk, Janesville, Wisconsin. I'm the owner of Rollat Oil Company at 1451 Madison Road. And I'll ask any of your questions.
Okay.
Can I respond one to Mr. Forrest? The beers, the gas stations, I've been doing gas business for 30 years. And first of all, the city of Janesville does allow beer to be sold in the convenience stores. I basically sold the store that we did sell beer and gas. What their description was, it used to be you had to have it in a separate room in the building, and then it had to be closed off at liquor time, or closing time. And now it's changed. Now, now it's open, that you can keep that room open as long as you stop the sales at that time.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about item six E?
And can I respond one more time? Then also on the, I have a liquor license at our Chopier Road truck stop. And when you look at the convenience store shopper that comes into the store, let's take the inner-city convenience store, first of all. And our shoppers that control or come into the stores, at your inner-city stores, are shoppers that are basically are not your traveler on your inner city. Those are the ones that are buying their gas for today's business, tomorrow's business, and going on. When they buy their gas, those are the same people that are usually headed home. So when you look at, I look at beer sales at our place, we have it all monitored and stuff like that. You get to know your customers. Your purchasing of beer sales start at a certain time of the day and end at a certain time of day. And those customers that are buying are the ones that are going home with their liquor or with their beer. They are not the traveler that you're going to go see drinking down the road. Now, on Chopier Road, on the interstate where we sell liquor and beer, you have a difference of a thing. The truck drivers who come in can't buy liquor because of basically now their new licensing. But those are the same guys that you worry about drinking. Those are the ones, and at the Chopier Road, we worry about those that pick up and leave and go. Those are not your regular customers. If it came to be a point where this was a, in defense of my competition, if he was an outer-city gas station, I would say you're probably right. Maybe it's a place to stop selling liquor to a location that has access to start more traveling, traveling, traveling. But we find out in our inner-city stores, the people going home or are stopping today to buy their beer and that bottle of liquor are the ones that are going home. They're not sitting in your parking lot, taking a drink behind the building. Those days have stopped. What I also would propose, though, for the city of Beloit, is things that we can do. You have your drug testing, or your, excuse me, your alcohol stings and your tobacco stings. I think it's time that the city of Beloit also goes to us, the convenience store people, and say, listen, we want your people to do more. We want you as the store owners to do more. What I propose also in this is that you go to the convenience store people, and you put into a city ordinance that if a convenience store operator catches a youth or an underage minor coming into your stores and buying liquor, they have a right to almost make a citizen's arrest. Stop the youth, just like we do for shoplifting, maintain them, call an officer, have an officer come in, and then find that individual. Now, at the same time, then... Now, at the same time, then we're doing our jobs as convenience store owners, and we're also doing something that maybe stops one youth from going out back or drinking and driving. And I think that to work with the police department, it'll help fund some of those things.
Okay. I think, I, I understand your passion for this issue, sir, uh, but at this point, I think, uh, I mean, we, we wanna make sure that we've discussed the matter of ourselves at this point, so, so thank you, and if, if in the future you do have questions like that, then feel free to bring it up to staff.
I just, at the point that, when it went already five to two against him in a different part of the city, it's like, I have competition already that sells liquor, beer and gasoline, and by you saying already no to one, who has options, you're taking away, you know, a business where twenty people are employed, and it is, I can see where he's fighting to have it.
Well, I, I think, I, I thank you for your, for your input, but I think we're, we're prepared to proceed. I'm closing the discussion. All right, do we have anybody, anyone else that would like to speak on the council? All right. Do we have, do we have, we had the?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lupke, second by Levy. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I would simply reiterate my comments from our earlier discussion on six D, was it? Um, I certainly understand Mr. Simon's position, uh, but I think the nexus between, uh, operation of a motor vehicle and the convenience store sale of, uh, Class A liquor is too close, and I think as a policy thing, we ought to simply say as a council, we're done with this in this city. What, what has existed in the past, I can't correct or, or change, but you can be darned tootin', if they are selling to minors and it comes up, I'm gonna vote to revoke them for as long as possible. If it puts them out of business, that's the way it goes. We have an obligation, in my view, to the public, in addition to being fair, to, to monitor this and to act as, as, as an enforcer in this situation, so, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So that fails two to five.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Item, okay, so, yes, item seven, ordinance, as there are none. Item eight is appointments. We have several appointments tonight. We have Loretta Evans at fifteen forty Oak Street replacing Stephen Smith for, on the Community Development Authority for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty fifteen. On Landmarks Commission, we have incumbent Ruth Vader being reappointed for a term ending October thirty-one, twenty fifteen. On, also on the Landmarks Commission, incumbent Legit Nat Johnson for a term ending thirty-one October twenty fifteen. And on the Traffic Review Committee, incumbent Dennis Walsh for a term ending September thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Do we have a motion to approve the appointments? Move by Levy?
Second.
Second by Vanda Bogart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Uh, I'd like to announce the following vacancies. For the Alcohol Beverage Licensing Control Committee, we have one vacancy for resident. Appointment Review Committee, one vacancy for resident. Board of Appeals, two vacancies, alternate for residents. Board of Ethics, one vacancy for former city councillor, one vacancy for resident. Disabled Parking Enforcement Assistance Council, three vacancies for residents with disabled plates. Equal Opportunity Human Relations Commission has one vacancy for resident. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for youth representative. Municipal Library Board, two vacancies for residents of Beloit or towns adjacent to the city. Parks and Recreation Conservation Advisory Commission has one vacancy for youth. Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for resident. If anyone would have any interest in, and we would encourage you to have interest in serving on one of these committees, please, please contact the city clerk's office. Moving on to item nine, councilor activity and upcoming events. Let's do something different today. Let's start with Counselor Levy.
And I know you're gonna do that. Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to, I see some of the high school students laugh, but I wanna welcome them again to the meeting this evening. Um, and one thing that I wanna really point out here, that as you see part of commissions and councils and boards, um, so as you go back to your council, uh, a lot of times on issues, you may not, you may not agree, and you may have some nice debate or a nice conversation. But I think the important thing that we take away from here, and hopefully that you will too, that when we get up and walk out of here, we're still all friends and we still all, we don't hold grudges. So what you see down here, and you may think, oh my God, they're really going at it. This is what we do because we're passionate about the seats that we sit in down here representing the city. So when we get up from here, we still can have a nice conversation with each other and, you know, still be civil to each other, because this is what we do, this is the passion that we have, uh, for the city, and, and when you're passionate about something, this is what it gets, but that it, in no way means that you, you can be disagreeable. Uh, but I just wanted to point that out and thank you for coming as well. And then I also wanna congratulate our own Rebecca Housman, uh, who was married on Saturday, uh, and dedicated, she's back at work on Monday, so we wanna say congratulations to her. Honeymoon in Beloit, right, way to go. And then also, if we could, um, the city manager, I did receive a call from a couple of people from the Porter Avenue group, is wondering about, um, if we could get some trash cans for the Porter Avenue, I mean, I, I got the call, so I just wanted, yeah, so, those are all that I have.
All right, thank you. Counselor Spritzer.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to make a, a general comment, uh, looking forward based on the discussion we just had. Clearly, we all have, uh, uh, strong feelings on, on liquor issues and I think are trying to, to send a message about some sort of coherent policy, even though we all have our nuances of how we approach it. I, I, I wonder if there would be any way to have, uh, whether, whether an official policy or even just sort of a resolution of understanding that might provide guidance to ourselves in the future and the ABLCC, if it might be worth looking into a workshop on the issue to, to see if we can somehow put something to paper that, that a majority of us agree on, that attempts to articulate where we're coming from, because it always feels more personal than I'd like it to be when we have an applicant standing in front of us and nobody wants to hurt anybody's business, and I just wish there was a way we could do it in a more systematic way rather than having to deal with these as, as they come forward and try to be fair, even though every case is, is a little bit different. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor Lupke.
I agree with, uh, Councilperson Spritzer. We need to be consistent and we need to have policies and procedures that fit, not just change as we go along, because here's another instance where we have gone against a committee, the Alcohol Commission, they, they approved it in both cases, and we've gone against it. Not, same we have to follow lock, stock and barrel, but it would help if they and we had a consistent policy and procedure. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Uh, I'll get, should I get positive now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Uh, I was very pleased last week to be at the Merrill groundbreaking with, uh, city manager Arf, who gave a nice talk to the assembled there, and, uh, no walls came tumbling down, it was, it was very nice.
That's a sore, that's a sore point. Okay. Counselor Kincaid.
I have nothing today.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I, I would look forward to the discussion that Mr. Spritzer was suggesting. I would point out that we've gone down the road before, and if I recall correctly, for example, Counselor Noonam was an advocate of a, a fixed number of licenses, and, and you get into the issue of if you adopt that as a policy, then they become valuable and, and you have to trade them or buy them, and, and what do you do if you have a, a major chain that comes into town or a fancy restaurant, and, so it's not a, it's not an easy policy issue to wrestle with. Um, on a positive note, I had a chance on Friday, uh, in the afternoon to see a little bit of the future. Uh, there were five hundred or more, uh, high school students who took time out of what otherwise would have been free time away from school to spend Friday afternoon, uh, building, uh, about a hundred and fifty thousand meals for Kids Against Hunger over at the high school. They had over fifty teams of ten each, uh, sprinkled with other adult volunteers, of which I was one, uh, who came in and helped construct these, uh, meals that are gonna be shipped, I believe, this year to the Philippines. Um, it was a project that's been ongoing for a number of years, and, uh, these individuals and, and students gave of their time and their effort to, uh, help somebody on the other side of the world that they'll never even meet, and it was kind of an exhilarating, uh, the, the part to, to play in that. On Sunday, I had the opportunity early in the morning at five-thirty to be down at the riverfront, getting ready to help cook ribs for the rib fest that was to benefit financially the domestic violence, uh, program here in Beloit and also the Beloit Hospice. There were thirteen, uh, contestants who came down and, and did some cooking, and then later in the day, in spite of the rain, a large number of people came and, and sampled and tasted ribs. I believe last year, uh, city manager Arf was one of the judges, and, uh, so it was, it was a wonderful event and lots of people helped, and I can tell you that at five-thirty in the morning on Sunday, it was foggy and it was absolutely gorgeous. The new bridge with the down lighting and the colors looked just outstanding, and, uh, it was a good, a good day in spite of getting wet. Everett?
Pretty good.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd like to extend my congratulations to Blackhawk Technical College for celebrating one hundred years. That's quite an accomplishment. Congratulations to them and the service they provide to our community, uh, through the technical education, um, available to our residents. Um, I was privileged to volunteer at Beloit Memorial High School's Challenge Day, uh, event today. Uh, was there all day from eight to four, and, um, really appreciated the opportunity to interact in a meaningful way with the students, uh, in ninth grade there, and, um, it's always a privilege to participate each year. Um, I certainly enjoyed attending the senior fair, kinda the other age spectrum of the continuum. Uh, my hats off to that committee that pulls off an incredible job. Uh, it was a fantastic event, um, a bunch of new vendors that never had even been there before, and even greater turnout. Um, I don't know how they get that many individuals through the line for flu shots as efficiently as they do, but it's pretty remarkable, so thank you to those who helped organize the senior fair. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure the community knew, uh, because, you know, we're always trying to, um, support our programming, our athletic programming in our city. You know, we have swimmers now that are just doing fantastic job because of the, the support programming we've been providing as kids are younger, and then also, um, our Beloit Youth Hockey Association is trying to encourage our next generation of hockey players, um, and on Sunday, October twentieth, and Sunday, October twenty-seventh, at Edwards Ice Arena, there'll be a free day of hockey for kids from ages four to twelve to come and check it out, see if it might be a, a fit for them. That's from noon to two, again, the twentieth and the twenty-seventh, uh, for ages four to twelve. So we'd like to, uh, to make our city proud with some, uh, great, uh, athletic accomplishments. Um, and, uh, my hats off also to those individuals who participated in the Boys and Girls Club Football Program. I'm excited about how that also has served as a feeder for our high school football program, uh, both our middle school and high school football programs. So I just am encouraged by the lots of great activities for our kids to be involved in, um, and excited about, uh, that we're starting younger and younger to get kids engaged in athletics as a, a positive outlet, so, thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you. Al, I have only a couple of things to add. I would like to remind everyone that before we meet again, um, all of the last of our, our activities that marked our summer will be ending. Uh, the farmer's market has only a couple of Saturdays left. Halloween will be the, in, in another, uh, week and a half. I admonished everyone to be safe during that time, and to enjoy those last little vestiges of summer. Uh, the city manager, myself and Counselor Vanda Bogart will be, uh, going up on Wednesday to attend the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, uh, conference. Uh, hopefully, hopefully we'll get, uh, a good comradeship and, uh, a number of ideas to bring back to the city, and that's all I have today. Item ten, city manager's presentation, and there isn't one, so we'll move on to item eleven A.
A resolution approving the State Line Area Bike and Pedestrian System Plan. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mr. Fleisch.
Yes, good evening. The plan was originally approved by the State Line Area Transportation Study in two thousand four, and was substant, substantially approved by you all at the same time. Since that time, in two thousand ten, it's been updated. The updates include, um, tables, maps, et cetera, just what's been done and what hasn't been done, and, and new priorities. Um, unfortunately, we forgot to bring that back to you in two thousand ten. We were reviewing some of our bike plans and looking at, uh, potential funding sources and realized we don't have an approval from you, and we need that to make it so we can get better grant funding as we apply for. So it's before you tonight, and as Rebecca said, the Plan Commission approved it six-zero.
Move for approval?
For approval.
Okay. Move by Lupke, second by Vanda Bogart. Counselor?
Uh, I do have one question. I did not get the opportunity to read through the plan again. Uh, is it the same as the one that was developed in two thousand and ten, 'cause I did read that one thoroughly? Are there any major changes?
That was the one in two thousand ten, was the one you're approving tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause it's been a long time.
Yeah. It's one of those that kinda fell off the edge of the desk or something, and, and as we were.
I didn't really wanna read that Bible again, but.
It's, you know, it's, yeah, I don't blame you. If you wanna go to sleep.
Wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1775.78]